I think they have a pill for that, don't they? Oh, okay. Well, you're always talking and ragging on him for the quantity charges. He thought he'd make it worth your money.
Thank you for the joke. Do we have any public comment on any of these?
No.
Well, go ahead. At this time, silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present will be called upon at appropriate time and each person will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. So we'll call this meeting order October 14th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Tonight's meeting, we're going to close in the memory of a longtime Grand Terrace resident, Mike Correa, also known as Mike the Car Guy. And I pulled up some information when I went from Spanish to English. It means drive belt or fan belt, your last name. I don't know if that's true, but Google told me that. But our prayers are with you and you and your family. And if there's anything the city can do for you, please let us know. You know, I'm sure if, you know, you'll announce when the memorial service, but that's up to you. I don't want to do it here. But we just appreciate everything that Mike has done for this city. I know he helped Johann a lot on the cars and coffee and everything. But we will miss him. And I'm sorry for your loss. And like I said, please, if there's anything we can do to reach out, just let us know. We'll be praying. I'll be praying for you and your family. But we will miss him. He was a good guy, always smiling. Superman, also known as Mike the Superman. But it's one thing about our little town here, everybody's family. And when somebody goes to be with the Lord, we all mourn together. And we'll be mourning your loss. So thank you for being here. And this will be in his honor. And you know, we'll still be thinking about him all the time in cars and coffee. He might be gone physically, but his memory will never be gone. His presence will always be felt here in the city of Grand Terrace. And we appreciate everything that he's done and you've done for this residence here in the city. And God bless you guys. So Pastor Linda from Azure Hills Seven Days Church will be giving an addiction. Yes, up there. If you can, Pastor, pray for the family, too. And then I'll be giving the Pledge of Allegiance. So everybody, please stand.
God, right now, we invite you into this space and we thank you for this opportunity to come together as the city of Grand Terrace. Walking into this space, we feel the sense of belonging, the sense of family, and the importance it is to be together as a city, God, to support one another and the things that happen here for our residents and one another. So, God, for agenda items that will always exist, for budgets that need to be passed, and bills that are being proposed, we invite you into this conversation right now. But more importantly, God, we want to stop and thank you for a life that has made a difference in this community, for Mike and his family, his brother that is here right now, as they take the time to receive the love from this group, from this body who represents so many people who will not forget. May his legacy continue to live on, God, until the day that you returned to wake him up. So, God, thank you for being here right now and all of the things said and all of the things shared. And may the decisions that are made here today be for your glory and for the benefit of all of us who are here in Grand Terrace, God. We love you in your name. I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Linda, for that beautiful prayer. All right, Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Protem Sabino?
Here.
Mayor Hussey?
Here.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Item A, reorder an addition or removal of any items on agenda. Do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
Okay. Item B, public comment. This opportunity for members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on their regular agenda because of restriction. Containing California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarifications. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff. The questions raised during public comment are may request the matter be agendaed for future meetings. Do we have any?
No, sir.
Thank you. We'll close public comment. Consent calendar. The following consent count, well, special presentation done. Item D, consent calendar. Following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon by the city council anytime without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of the item from the consent calendar for discussions. Is there any public comment?
Yes, sir. I actually have an email public comment from Ms. Juanita Odenbaugh regarding item agenda number 12. It states, "Please stop selling out my neighborhood and completely revoke all of CUP 19-01. Please repair and maintain the streets that were damaged by CUP 19-01. Please, no resident of Grand Terrace deserves to live next to a trucking company who deliberately brought diesel fuel into the neighborhood. Please vote like you live on the West End. Thank you." That's the end of public comment.
Thank you. City manager, you have any response to the public comment on that?
I do not.
Okay. Are we within our rights on CUP 1901? As far as that, city manager?
Yes.
So everything's been checked and balanced on there?
Correct. They are voluntarily relinquishing their CUP.
Okay. All right, before we vote, direct the city attorney to read the title and ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the title of the ordinance for second reading and adoption in item nine, the title is as follows. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, amending chapters 15.04, general provisions for building code, 15.08 building code, 15.09 existing building code, 15.10 residential code, 15.12 electrical code, 15.16 plumbing code, 15.17 green building standards, 15.18 California fire code, 15.19 historic building code, 15.20 mechanical code, 15.21 reference standards, and 15.22 property maintenance code of title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, and adding chapter 15.11 Wildland Urban Interface Code of Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, adopting the 2025 California Building Code Volumes 1 and 2, 2025 California Fire Code, 2025 California Existing Building Code, 2025 California Historic Code, 2025 California Energy Code, 2025 California Administrative Code, 2025 California Reference Standard Code, 2025 California Residential Code, 2025 California Green Building Standards Code, 2025 California Wildland Urban Interface Code, 2025 California Electrical Code, 2025 California Plumbing Code, 2025 California Mechanical Code, 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, and 1997 Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I forgot to turn my hearing aids on. Can you do that again?
And pardon me, just for the record, there was a update to Exhibit B for item number 12. I printed a copy for each of you at the dais for review.
Okay, you know, we'll go ahead and pull item 12 for discussion. So I need to reclose myself from item D4 for August check, registered number 82833 for $359.85 for reimbursement of health insurance, and item D7 for September check register 829008 for $359.85 for distribution for health insurance.
Honorable mayor, I'd also like to recuse myself from item D5, the August check, register check number 82888 for $1,110 for reimbursement of health insurance.
Okay, great. So I need a motion for 1 through 11. We're going to poll 12 for discussion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the balance of the consent calendar with the exception of item number 12.
Second. Okay, we have approval for 1 through 12, with myself being recused, and so is...
Pardon me, mayor, we also have number 13 on the next page.
Okay, well, vote on item 1 through 11 and 13? My pages are stuck together.
Thank you.
That's my motion.
Okay, approve legal services for agreement. Okay. All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, let's go back to item 12. What do we have here, Daisy? We have...
The CUP revocation?
Does Gilbert Worcester add to any of this? Did you make this? I mean, Gabriel, I'm sorry, Gabriel. Gabriel, did you want to add anything to this? I'm sorry, Gabriel. Your name's Gilbert today, so...
Yeah, Gabriel Argüés, Assistant Planner for the City of Grand Terrace, Planning and Development Services. No, nothing to add to the report. I did have a late addition to Exhibit, I think it was B, to take out the draft conditions of approval and insert the actual resolution that was passed approving SA 1903, and then approving CUP 1901 back in 2020. So that's the approval that you have in front of you. And simply, the blue portions are going to be extracted out by this new resolution here tonight.
All right, Gabriel, do we have any problems with the planning commission going over this CUP?
For, excuse me, can you be a little more specific on that one?
So this one from the planning commission, the same item?
This is the existing CUP that they are revocating, that they are turning in, not a new CUP.
All right. Okay, so that's all you needed to add on there, just to put some revisions in there?
Right, just exactly what we're extracting from the resolution that was approved in 2020. That's right.
Does the council have any questions for...
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess the first question I have is regarding item number three. Why are we eliminating the proposed business hours, which were Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and prohibiting business hours after 10:00 PM except for emergencies? Why is that being removed as a condition?
Well, we're removing all conditions related to CUP 1901.
What is our remedy if they violate the truck stacking along Terrace Avenue?
Well, currently, the code will be, you know what, will be the enforcement document for any new user that occupies the site. So currently, it's a vacant site and no tenant is attached. No business license, no tenant, no, it's a vacant site.
All right. So if the tenant violates the truck stacking regulation, the penalties in the administrative code would be applied?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Gabriel.
Right. But again, like, it's a little bit of a hypothetical. We would have like a review of the operator and the tenant and approve via business license if that use is permitted via code.
Well, the truck traffic would be my main concern and the impact, you know, obviously to Barton Road and the neighboring residential community and the commercial area there. So I just want to be on the record that I wanted to ask the question, what enforcement mechanism do we have if that's violated?
And it would be the administrative tools that we currently have.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Wilson?
Number 23. I'm a little concerned with the language of this. It says applicant or signee shall provide a project delivery staging and operating schedule to the city for the purpose of avoiding stacking? How about we prohibit stacking?
That condition is going to be eliminated from the approval because it is attached to CUP 1901.
Okay. That's all I had. Thanks.
Any other questions? So Gabriel, I think the last time they had issues with the trucks going down residential streets, I'm sure we still have signage up there that says, you know, no truck traffic. And we're probably going to have a couple wander again. So, Councilmember Brown, administrative action tickets on that, and it's going to go to the property owner? The tickets or the business?
Well, for this entitlement, this is for the property, and the TSG was the operator that was previously operating at that site. They're no longer in business and they no longer occupy the site. They've, you know, they're no longer under lease for that property. And so no truck traffic will be happening or permitted to be there as of right now.
Okay. Now, when they do have truck traffic and they're moving, this is off the wall question. It's on in there. The bridge for Colton, I heard is supposed to be worked on. You guys, have you guys looked into that?
Yeah.
To make this easier for the truck traffic? Pardon?
We've been included in those conversations.
Okay. Is any timeframe when this is going to happen?
About the bridge?
Yeah, I asked them this week, and the answer was not in the next six months is the timeframe that we're getting from.
Didn't they say that six months ago?
Probably. But that's in their timeframe, construction will not begin in the next six months.
But they're fully funded for that bridge?
That is correct. And they are in design phase.
So what can we do as our city to make sure six months from now, we get a better answer?
Since they are the lead agency outside of discussing with them, we can't find them, cite them, or force them.
So just talking to the mayor and stuff over there and being... Mayor Protem?
Just to be clear, Gabriel, thank you for clarifying the components that are being taken out. Again, the property owner has independently revoked their CUP, correct? They've relinquished?
Right.
Correct. And so these pieces are just attached to that CUP that the property owner has relinquished, correct?
You're right.
Because I feel like we're kind of getting put in the cart before the horse. We don't know what the new proposal is. We don't know what's going, what's moving forward. And so this is just to accept their relinquishment, correct?
You are 100% right.
Thank you.
This is completely a removal of everything for a blank slate. Then whatever happens after this is speculation and will happen at a later date.
Thank you. Because I know there's kind of a lot of debate taking place for something that they've willingly removed after the contention that was held between the two parties. So they've made good on their word at this point, and now we're just here to accept their relinquishment. Yes?
Right. And then, yeah, go ahead.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Allen, you had something to say? No? All right, sir. Well, thank you for the attachment. Now, Councilmember Brown?
So just to be clear, we won't see this item again unless there's an appeal at the planning commission level from their action that they take Thursday night. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Gabriel.
Okay, we got that all straightened out. Anybody else have any questions? So item 12 is up for a vote.
Excuse me, mayor, I did receive two more public comments. If I can have Bobby Forbes come up?
I tried to make it, but the long walk from the back parking lot did me in. This is from Cynthia Bidney. Dear mayor and members of the city council, I would like to express my concern regarding the proposed conditional use permit and any related changes for the property located at 11731 Terrace Avenue. While the proposal may appear to involve routine modifications, I believe the location itself warrants serious reconsideration, introduction, or expansion of a trucking company in this area poses significant risks and long-term impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. Trucks traveling through the community, whether entering from Locadina Drive, Grand Terrace Road, or the roundabout, create safety hazards for residents, children, and other motorists. In addition, the noise, vibration, and wear and tear on local streets will directly degrade the quality of life for nearby homeowners who will bear responsibility when the increased truck traffic destroys neighborhood peace, damages public infrastructure, and diminishes property values. What safeguards will be in place to ensure the city's fiduciary responsibility to its residents, homeowners who pay their taxes and have long work to preserve the safety, comfort, and beauty of Grand Terrace? I respectfully ask the council to deny or reconsider approval of a CUP until thorough evaluation of its neighborhood impact is complete, including traffic, noise, environmental studies, as well as meaningful outreach to affected residents. Thank you for your attention and commitment to protecting the community we all value. Cynthia Bidney. I think that is more so for Thursday night's meeting for the planning commission. If I understand right, all they're asking tonight is to take back the CUP. We know he's up to something. I live in the neighborhood. He violated everything for over two years. Thank you. Thank you very much for letting me read that.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. So do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I'll move.
Second.
The motion is second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. It's a public hearing, non-inflicted. New business, approval of City Grand Terrace 2040 Vision.
So, good afternoon, council. Judith Garcia, management analyst with the city manager's office. So tonight, I will be presenting the Vision 2040, a community-wide effort to create the city's next long-range vision and roadmap. So this staff report supports goal number four, development and implement successful partnerships, and goal number five, to engage in a proactive communication. So the Vision 2030 and the 2014-2020 strategic plan were adopted in 2014, recognizing the need to establish a shared vision and direction for the community. The 2030 vision outlines the city's mission and core values, which all elected officials, staff, and residents embraced as a foundation for decision-making. The 2030 vision provided a way forward at the time when the city needed stability and direction. A component of the 2030 vision was the 2014-2020 strategic plan that was developed to help the city prioritize its efforts and allocate both fiscal and human resources towards a shared vision and goal. Together, these plans acted as a roadmap, providing a common set of guidelines to ensure that both residents and the city benefited economically and socially. Now, as those goals are nearing their sunset, it is now necessary to establish the next strategic framework to carry the city forward to the year 2040. To this end, staff is introducing the 2040 vision. So Vision 2040 will create a clear process to ensure today's efforts lead to meaningful and measurable results. Together, we will develop a shared mission and vision statements, identify core values, create a three-year road plan, and engage residents, business, staff, stakeholders, to create a structured process that ensures today's efforts lead to a long-term goal. So in order to achieve that, the following milestones will guide the Vision 2040 process with measurable deliverables at each stage to ensure accountability, transparency, and the opportunity for a council and community input. So first milestone, the project launch, which is this introduction and the presentation in hopes to achieve that council authorizes the scope and charter. Next, it will be the steering team development and setup, where we will appoint an executive sponsor and vision steering team members, will set up a website, develop a survey, and establish an outreach and engagement plan. For the outreach and engagement plan, staff recommends the following engagement to help make sure everyone in the community has a chance to be involved. The city will use the following techniques to each residents, businesses, and local groups to raise awareness, encourage people to take part, and to share ideas and feedback. So our first one would be through digital and online engagement. We would have a dedicated 2040 Vision page on the city website with the projects, updates, the survey links, and a timeline. We'll do a social media campaign on Facebook and Instagram and have direct links to the survey included in the flyers, newspaper, and newsletters. Through the community partnerships, we will collaborate with schools and youth organizations to gather students' perspective, engage through faith-based groups, senior centers, and senior clubs, and a partnership with our local businesses and the Chamber of Commerce to distribute the surveys and host discussions. And lastly, the direct community outreach, where we will have pop-ups at the city's special events, survey stations here at the library, senior center, and city hall, and the mailing out postcards to collect info from each of the households. So returning to our milestones, the third one, the current state assessment. So we would perform a staff and council interviews. With this, we would understand the city's strengths, weaknesses, ops, and threats, and we would build our current conditions reports off of those swap findings. Next milestone, community insights. We would launch the survey, publish the engagement results report, and identify the top 10 community insights, and focus on the key theme and priorities that matter most to the residents. The next milestone would be to draft the vision and themes. So we would draft the vision statement plan, host community workshops, and publish the draft vision and themes for the community comment on the city's website. Next, the draft the roadmap. So we would draft a three-year roadmap, council workshop meetings, and update the Vision 2040 website with the KPI dashboards. And lastly, adoption, where we would have a council study session to refine goals in the roadmap and then adopt the resolution of the three-year roadmap. So staff recommends that the city council approve initiations of the 2040 strategic vision program, authorize staff to proceed with stakeholder engagement and program milestones, and direct staff to return with the periodic updates culminating in a city adopted vision plan and a three-year road plan. Together, these actions will provide a structural framework to guide the city's long-term direction while ensuring accountability, transparency, and community participation through the process. So alternatives for the recommendations, council may choose to take no action at this time. The city would continue to operate under the existing 2030 vision framework, making limited adjustments. Council may direct staff to prepare a Vision 2040 framework based solely on council-driven vision rather than through the community engagement. Or the council may approve this Vision 2040 with modifications, and this can include adjustments to the scope or the engagement strategies. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
So council, good job, Judith.
Thank you.
Does the council have any questions? Does the council have any questions? Mayor Proton?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. The slide with the different milestones, with the dropdowns, that one. Just a couple of questions, and I know this is kind of just a foundational outline, and I'm not sure if you might have the answer to these today, but maybe just even food for thought for later. Are we running analytics on our website and social to look at the engagement from the community, and how many are organic and those who are just kind of repeat? Do we gather that data at this time?
We have analytics on the website, not our socials.
Okay. Just because I was curious, are we seeing, like, since we boosted social, are we seeing numbers go up, or have they remained stagnant? Just curious.
Actually, it may not be directly related, but since we put the community calendar on, we are seeing hits coming up on that.
Okay.
So, with the facts in the community calendar, we are seeing more visits, but it's nothing phenomenal. It could just be background noise of people looking.
Okay. Just because I want to ensure that if and when, if this is a path that we follow, that once we get to the point of engaging the community in surveys, that our numbers are good, that we have those organic clicks, that we are consulting or familiar with the analytics to be able to drive those, especially people to the website, so that way we can increase that, because what we find in our community, just as with our volunteers, we have the kind of the same group and repeat number of people who are giving their input, but don't always believe that it's cohesive and representative of Grand Terrace as a whole. And so, those were my only thoughts on that.
So, one to clarify before you step away.
Sure, sure.
Not that it was a test run, but it worked out that way, was our Blue Mountain Trail survey. Was a great way for us to put a survey out into the public. Were able to measure those analytics and see a fairly broad spectrum of input across the community. We can, we plan on doing the same thing with this as far as bringing back our measurements.
Absolutely. And maybe when we're in the community, at community events, when we have our booth, maybe having a QR code and maybe just showing people, you know, you can either take this here today, or we can, you know, you can scan this code, and that way we're driving people to the website, because time and time again, people diver, they go to social, and they expect the community to have that information. I would love to drive more people to the website, and just getting that feedback, even when we're out in the community, if it's not feeling user-friendly, then how do we adjust those, so that way we can, people can get through those layers if things are feeling buried. But that was all. I think this is great. I want to make sure just that we have a successful survey, so that way, once you get into this, we have good numbers. That's all. Thank you.
Councilor Allen.
Thanks for that report. And on the discussion paragraph on page 448, in the last sentence, it says, "These steps will lead to a draft vision and a roadmap, and ultimately, a council-adopted vision plan with a three-year roadmap." I'm going to ask you about the three-year roadmap. What's that road, what are we talking about? Why is it a three-year roadmap? Why is it three years? What's this roadmap, a map to?
So, the Vision 2040 as a whole, it would lead us there, but we have decided to do the three-year roadmap that will turn the Vision 2040 Plan into a practical action. So then, we'll have results or goals to have been met within the three-year ones. So, it will outline the specific projects, timelines, and the responsibilities, so the city can make steady progress towards the long-term goal of the 2040.
So, the, so, at the, when council adopts the vision plan, then is that when the three-year roadmap, the three-year timeframe starts? And what's the goals to be accomplished in three years as opposed to between now and 2040?
Yes. So, once we start conducting the surveys, getting the community input, conducting the workshops, then we'll narrow it down to what in three years we want to see accomplished then. So, we would be accepting that, yes, we're going to move forward with the three-year roadmap, but we won't have the specifications yet until full adaptation.
Yeah, okay, that's great. But where's that map taking us to at the end of three years? Where are we going to be?
That's to be determined by the survey.
Okay, so is that a three-year time schedule for surveys for three years and all that?
We will run this process. Once we're complete with the roadmap, then there's a three-year window to actually come down with definable things that will happen between now and 2040. It's one thing to say, and while the 2030 Plan has been a great guide, you know, things like, I just pulled one at random, promote economic development. That's
Pretty broad.
Pretty broad. So, what we want to do is say, okay, promote economic development, but in that three-year place, let's lay out specific things. In year two, we want this. In year five, we want this. In year seven, we want these things that are measurable and attainable. Because if you tell me, Conrad, I want you to promote economic development, I'm like, yeah, sure, I'm all over that. Or you tell me, I want a, two new businesses, or I want this, and it's a very defined, and we can do this across every item in the plan. So, that three-year window allows us to define what the specific pins will be that will get us from here to there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Let me look at Councilman Brown and make sure. No?
Fantastic. You did a fantastic job. I very much look forward to participating in this process and actually encouraging our residents to also participate, give their feedback, attend the meetings, because it helps us do our job, quite frankly. We want to deliver long-term projects for the city that improve our quality of life and bring the amenities that we don't, we're missing now. And I love to have those conversations with our residents and read their comments online, because people out there have a lot of great ideas, and I'm sure you'll be able to incorporate them. So, thank you for your work on this project.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, so there's no public comment, no further questions. Do I have a motion for approval in a second, or any suggestions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. City Attorney, you have anything to add?
So, I, there's, I just want to make sure that we're making the staff's recommendation to authorize staff to proceed with stakeholder engagement and program milestones, direct staff to return with periodic updates culminating in a council-adopted vision plan and three-year roadmap. Just, okay.
The staff recommendation?
Yes. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Judith.
Thank you.
Were you nervous? You and Gabriel. I don't know if we even need a city manager, or you two guys stepping up to the plate, so, that's good. All right. You guys both did a great job. Okay, future gen items. At this time, as the city council may propose an item discussed in our actions to future duly agenda, city council meeting consensus of majority of the quorum is required to place on a future gen items. Do I have any requests for future gen items? None? City Council Communications, Councilman Brown?
Well, I've been busy since our last council meeting, but I had the opportunity to participate in the Colton Grand Terrace Relay for Life, and I just wanted to thank Councilmember Allen for his leadership on forming a team for Grand Terrace, because it's my understanding that it's the first time Grand Terrace has been represented in the Colton Grand Terrace Relay for Life. And next year, we're going to be even bigger and better. We're going to have more teams. I know some of the other organizations in Grand Terrace are going to participate, so it was pretty exciting to get out there. It was a fantastic event. Other than that, I attended the JPIA Conference on behalf of the city, the Grand Terrace Chamber of Commerce meeting, the California League of Cities meeting, and then to top it off, this last weekend, the Grand Terrace Fall Festival, which was another outstanding community event, and will give us an opportunity to gather citizen feedback at next year's event on our 2040 Plan. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. So, yeah, that Relay for Life was really something, man. And I got, and I got to say it again, Mayor Hussey, 30 miles, 12 straight hours of humping that ruck, man, I tell you what, whoa.
I was waiting for Councilman Brown to walk with me. I saw him for half a mile.
Yeah, it was really, I was impressed. And then, of course, Lieutenant, you blew my socks off, too, whenever you ran that half marathon, nonstop. That's a, I got to hand it to you guys, yeah. Of course, you're a lot younger than me, too.
Yeah, he was making me sweat when he was running, so that's why I kept going.
But just, we raised about $1,300, and so, a little over our goal, and I thank everyone. And we're, we are going to do better next year. We'll get involved earlier, and so, anyway, I also attended the Joint Powers Insurance Authority's Annual Conference, and I know that it's mostly geared towards staff and risk management, but they do have a few pertinent class and seminars on, for elected officials, and it mostly pertains to, because it's risk management, it's one of those, you know, CYA classes, you know, making sure that you're doing the right things and not doing the wrong things. There was a lot of discussion about elected leaders' use of social media, that their private accounts really aren't private, they're public, and you better not, and the pitfalls of that is, don't delete anything and don't block anybody. If you don't want, if you don't want to deal with it, just remove your account, is what they're saying. And the other, one of the other sessions that we attended was on partisan politics and city government, and how out of place it is, because city governments and county governments are nonpartisan law offices, you know, and they're just for the good of the people here in the community on the ground, trying to improve the quality of life. That's what everybody wants. And so, JPI had a great session on trying to nip that in the bud with the partisan politics behind the dais at the local level. And the following week, I went to the Cal Cities Conference, and I got to tell you, the best thing that Cal Cities ever did at any of the conferences I've been to. I went to the pre-conference tour to the city of Avalon and was blown away by the way some cities have to manage themselves to provide services for their residents. This is a city of 30, of about 3,000 people, that every day in the morning, the population increases to over 100,000, and they have to manage water, and food, and waste, and everything gets brought in on a barge, and everything gets taken out on a barge, but, and it's the only place where Southern California Edison sells not only the electricity, but the gas and the water, because they own the desalination plants and that produce the clean, enough clean water for the island to have drinking water. They don't flush their toilets with pure, with clean water. They use seawater for their toilets and for their fire hydrants. And they have to use, of course, because saltwater eats stuff up so fast, they use clay pipes. And so, there's a lot of things, they're, imagine they have one city dump on that island, and it's full, and you have the population that you have during the daytime just throwing their trash everywhere, and so, they have to manage that, and they have one gas station, and the gas cost, sit down, sit down, I know how you are about this, $8.60 a gallon. So, but, you know, the neat thing about Avalon is, if you live there, everybody gets a permit for an autowet. You don't get a car, but you can get an autowet. DMV defines, that's how they define golf carts, autowets. And, you know, at the Cal Cities Conference, following the pre-conference tour, of course, there's all the usual things that we discussed about, you know, with funding and all that stuff, but one of the things I noticed, they had the same seminars on partisan politics at the local level. And so, apparently, they're trying to tell us, all of us local politicians here, something. Those who are sitting on the other side watching us, and they're trying to tell us something, saying, hey, you know, if you really want to improve your cities and the life, the quality of life of your residents, keep partisan politics out of, out of it. So, yeah, it seemed like that was a theme there. And then, again, the Oktoberfest last Saturday, a big, huge shout-out to this Greater Grand Terrace Area Chamber of Commerce. You folks have really stepped up and put our city on the map, and I just got to say, my hat is off to all of you. Thank you very much, Chamber of Commerce, and the Lions Club for all you do for the city, you know. We just, we owe you folks so much, so thanks, thank you for that. It was a great event. The Lions had their, you know, their beer garden, and a Hummerschläger, did you do the Hummerschläger, Mayor?
No, I didn't stick around. I had to take granddaughters to Disneyland.
You can walk 30 miles, but you can't nail it, put a nail in it. Anyway, that's a great game. Check that Hummerschläger out. That's all I got, Mayor. Thanks.
Dunka. So, Councilman Wilson?
Just a single thing. Mayor and I attended the UCR celebration of 10 years of their Public Policy School, and it was, it was interesting to us. Lot of self-congratulations, but in there, the intention is, is that a lot of education is going into, and research is going into, the concept of trying to influence politicians as well as citizens about various items. And so, we spent about an hour and a half there, and they had a little bit of food, and we avoided that, and went ahead and listened to the different discussions, and the former mayor, Ron Lovridge, was there and didn't realize he was 87 years old, I think, somewhere in that direction. Anyway, so, good for him. It was, it was an interesting time, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Thank you. I, too, attended the Fall Festival. Thank you to our Chamber of Commerce and the Lions Club for putting on such a great event. I as well did attend California League of Cities, and, again, as Councilman Allen mentioned, you know, the, the running theme of nonpartisan, I just have to say, I just have to give kudos to our dais and those who lead the city. I mean, praise God, we're not the elected officials at the school board who we tend to see having issues, but with us, time and time again, we've continued to remain neutral, especially on issues of flying any other flags. We continue to be God and country, and so, you know, thank you to this, to the chamber, I mean, to Cal Cities for continuing to bring that forward, and thank you to my colleagues here at the dais for always remaining on the right side of things. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yes, thank you, Councilman Allen, for organizing the Relay for Life. I'm going to try 40 miles next year, and Councilman Brown will be my pit crew. But, no, it was for a good cause, and I, I know it's, people are fighting that and struggling every day with cancer, and I just pray for them and pray for their families. The League of Cities, great event, usual, like, but what you were saying is, you know, being part of the League of Cities and everything that we got going, as the governor signed SB 79 for more density, high-rise apartments by transit areas and transit areas, and, you know, it's trying to keep our local control is the biggest thing in this state, and not letting the state run away with it with their ideas. And it seems like that's happening more and more, and that's mainly the letters that go out daily, sent to daisies, sent to the council members about what they're trying to push on local cities and just taking away our control. If we don't fight for our control, then we don't have our little town. And I know sometimes we have to vote on things that's out of our control, something that we don't want to vote on, but we have to. One of the biggest things is, you know, you know, with, to be within policy, but we still fight for what's right, but we also have to worry about getting sued and, and taking away valuable resources away from our city, but we still have to fight for what our city gets. And one of the things that, out there in the League of Cities, was a grant writing. And, you know, we, we really need to push harder on grants, because, you know, we pay taxes. And when we pay those taxes, we want our piece of the pie. You know, we're not a rich city. We, you know, Christine will tell you, we count every penny. Every penny is accounted for. And we don't like wasting pennies. So that's the big thing, is the league will continue to fight to maintain local control. And if gasoline costs so much, there, Councilman Allen, tell them that we have some donkeys, and they could get a cart, and if they get cold, they could burn Donkey Dunk, but I don't know if that'd be environmentally safe, but that'd be one of the things they could do. But I know that, that'd be interesting to see, because I know when the cruise ships go to Catalina, I was there when a cruise ship got there, and unfortunately, we went out to dinner, act towards a pizza place, and go, oh my God, that's expensive pizza, and they go, oh, that's a cruise ship menu. So they brought out the local menu. So if you wanna go to Catalina, don't go on a Wednesday when the cruise ship's there. So there's my advice. But no, great events. You have the chambers, the Oktoberfest was great. Word of advice, don't bring your wife and the granddaughters, and they ask you for money. I don't know how many souvenirs we got, but I did buy a nice thing from Jason Greeley, he had an engraved Haunted Mansion cup thing there, and it was really neat, you know, he's starting to engrave, so if you need anything engraved, he, he has a laser engraver, he wanted me to let everybody know. But a great time. Big rainstorm today. I got some news on some accidents with Omni-Trans and stuff, so people, when it's raining, please slow down. I don't think we had any significant damage in our city from the storms. I seen Halloween decorations get blown away. I swear, I saw a witch fly by my house, and, and I don't think it was my wife driving, I don't know, you know, on the broom, but I have to say that every year, she is gonna get me anyway, so. But, you know, you gotta be careful of stuff flying through the area, and, and just be careful when you're driving. And, yeah, the council pretty much covered everything, and what we did. We're always busy, but we're always fighting for our residents. And so that's all I have, City Manager, before I put my foot back in my mouth again.
With the storm coming through, please, we're, there is, there was some wind damage, not damage, but palm fronds, tree branches down. We got what we can so far, but it was getting dark as we were cleaning up today. So please be careful as you drive, and then please call in, let us know if there's anything else out there in the streets, but we'll be back at it in the morning. But please, please be careful as you drive. And I really would like to thank the community as a whole, that, you know, we've really pushed for the community looking better, people taking care of their properties, and we're, we're seeing this across the board. So those of you who are doing that, thank you. It really adds to the value of the community, it adds to the, your home value, to the way we feel about the city. And as part of that, we went through a round early this year of letting people who do not have grass, or yard, or any landscaping at their house, let them know that they needed to, to work on that. We've kind of addressed it once or twice, to gently prod them. They've had the last nine months. And so those, those of you that have not taken that effort, just a heads up, the gently prodding is coming to an end, and we will be taking administrative actions as necessary to encourage people to invest in their homes and in their community. And, and also thank, thank everybody for being respectful of the dumpster out front. It really has not been a mess for the last couple of weeks. And people are, people are using it accordingly, and when it's full, they come back and fill it up for us again. And that's what it's here for. It's really a unique, a unique thing that no other city in, in the state has. So thank you for being respectful of that. Lieutenant, you got anything?
Yes, thank you. Just, I'm gonna talk about, I had a conversation with one of our detectives today, and one of the things, he's, he's working a couple of different cases, and I just wanna remind the community, and also City Council, when you're, when you're off, you know, talking to community members, remind them that we're getting into a very busy season with the holidays coming up, and Amazon, and gift packages, and things like that. And one of the things we're seeing is, on these cases, it'd be very helpful if the community had Ring cameras, Arlo cameras, things like that, right? And a lot of times, people are like, ah, it's expensive, and, you know, the initial investment, usually, you know, it could be a couple hundred dollars, you know, you can get them on sale at, at Amazon, or at Costco, things like that. But, you know, the, the investment for, for Ring camera, you know, Ring camera, maybe ninety-nine dollars a year, you know, that's for a basic, basic. Sometimes they're as low as fifty dollars a year, you know, ninety-nine dollars up to, I think, a hundred and fifty dollars a year. So sometimes it's ten dollars a month. But it, but it helps us as law enforcement, because, you know, again, kinda like Mayor Protam mentioned, it's great that, that people are putting down, things out on social media, and it's like, hey, this person's been, you know, stealing in this area, or, you know, we're seeing this particular area. But, you know, unless we're, unless we're getting, you know, some, some information plates, and, and names, and things like that, and we'll go and look at a particular area, but if there's no camera footage, it's hard to, to pinpoint and get those people in custody. And I'll tell you, like, there's, there's no better feeling as law enforcement, when you put that case together, and we get a suspect, and we're able to make that arrest, and, and get them out of that area, you know. But we really need help from the community, especially in Grand Terrace, because we, we need Ring cameras out there. If, if the community could just take a couple hundred dollars and invest that, and at least get some Ring camera footage, and when these crimes are occurring, you could help your neighbors, you could help yourself, but it really helps us as law enforcement to put these cases together, to really get these people out. Because what's gonna happen is, you know, the longer we, we don't get these people in custody, they're just gonna keep victimizing Grand Terrace, and it just creates more crime. So just be diligent, especially this time of year with all the porch pirates and things like that, you know, getting all those people out of there. Be diligent also, just, again, we, we mentioned every city council, just, if you see something, say something, plate numbers, just anything, call it in, because we wanna, you know, get these cases solved, to get these people out here. Other than that, I appreciate everything the community's been doing to, to report these crimes, and that's all I have.
Chief, snuck in here, didn't end up in the pit, but you got anything for us? All right, thank you.
Conrad, let me go back to the, our city dumpster. Has, we been having contractors dump in there?
Off and on, but it's not a recurring issue. There, there are some, there, I figure they're, they're probably bad actors, and it's better to have them dump in the dumpster than at the end of DeBerry Street on the cul-de-sac. So bad actors will be bad actors. But for the most part, it's really what it is, the residents picking up that pile of junk next to the garage, or emptying their garage, or, you know, I saw somebody out there the other day, and I'm like, you know, just, thank you, it's, it's too much for me to take, you know, too much for me to put in the trash can, not enough for me to go to the dump, and it's a great resource.
During holidays, are we gonna put two dumpsters out there again?
We can, we can look at that, probably that week at Christmas, as everybody's throwing away their wrapping paper, and, and maybe instead of a regular dumpster, we can get a recycling one, just for cardboard and paper, rather than just have a co-mingle landfill.
Are we gonna have any recycle days, far as like, where Burt Tech and hazardous waste come by in the future?
Yeah, we have that scheduled every year, there are hazardous waste days. And then there's also, Burt Tech does a large item pickup, if you call them, they will come pick up large, I think it's twice a year, items at your home. The other thing that we will be adding with the dumpster is, there is a new mandate that clothes be recycled, not put in the, the regular waste stream. So we will be putting a closed recycling box there. And we're contemplating a, a electronic recycling container, smaller containers, so that would really become someplace that the community can use, and get that recycling, and get the diversion out of the, the waste stream.
Okay. LT, you're talking about Ring cameras, and cameras, you know, I know they're affected, and hopefully we get some more flock cameras. Did we just catch somebody in Highland Apartments? Somebody recorded somebody breaking in? Have you heard anything on that, in cars and stuff?
Yeah, I saw that on social media, we're still looking into that. So ongoing investigation, so that, that's not, the information that was posted that they were in custody is not accurate. We're working Riverside County right now, that person is not in custody, but we do have them ID'd. But they have not been in custody for some time. So they are not a local resident to this area, so they were in this area from out of county. But we are working right now to get that person in custody. And again, it goes back to, yes, that person was in the area, however, if, if we don't have set evidence that says this person was in this particular area, and that's, that's where it's helpful in some of these high-crime areas, is to have some kind of way that we can put that person in those, in those areas. So that's helpful if we have that. It just, it makes the investigation a little less complicated, and, and easier to get that person in custody. So, but that information that was posted, that was keep getting reposted, is not completely accurate.
What can the residents in the apartment complexes do to help safeguard, like, their property? I mean, you know, the cars, you know, take stuff out of their cars, don't leave it, lock their cars. Any camera systems, or?
Yeah, camera, camera systems would be great. Like I said, and I don't know how it works inside apartment complexes, and they, they may have to have some approval from the, from the property management to do that, but they, I mean, if anything, you know, they could have it on their, on their, their door, you know, on the front of their entryways. But I think we need to maybe set up some future meetings with some of these areas, with these apartment complexes and such, to start getting some surveillance in those, more than what they've got right now. But more so for the community, that, I mean, don't leave your valuables in your vehicle. A lot of these things that are being stolen are high value, I mean, thousands and thousands of dollars worth of property that are just in plain view inside their vehicles. And if it's in an area that's already getting hit with a lot of vehicle theft, and burglaries, and things like that, that's what they, people do. They check your, check your door handles, and if you make it easy and leave your door unlocked, they're gonna get into it. They'll smash the window if they look in there and see thousands of dollars worth of belongings. So if, if the community could please, again, just take all that stuff out of the car. If there's valuables, bring it inside. You know, if anything, they'll smash the window, they'll rifle through, get change, or things like that. But at least you're, I mean, we've had social security cards, and laptops, and expensive purses, and cash, and, I mean, just all kinds of stuff that's just getting stolen, that doesn't need to get stolen, you know. So they'll, they'll look through, if they don't see anything, they'll go on to the next vehicle. So just don't, don't be a victim, you know, just make it a little bit easier on yourself, and, and help us out by just keeping your valuables inside your house.
Proactive.
For sure, for sure.
Yeah, 'cause I know we're getting off tangent here, but, you know, just, far as proactive, backpacks especially, it's easier to carry the stuff in. This youth pastor at my church, his wife left her backpack in there, had her wallet with both sets of keys, well, another set of keys. The car got stolen, about two o'clock in the morning, they heard another car alarm at their apartment. It was that thief, and then I guess the two cars were used for a murder. So you never know what's gonna happen. And by the grace of God, that young youth pastor didn't go out there and confront them, 'cause she told him not to. But, you know, it's always up to some, so yeah, proactive is the big thing.
Yeah, proactive's great. And I was talking to City Manager about this, too, you know, those flock cameras are great, and, and that would be a great investment in the future, spreading those out even more across the city, because we had an attempted murder in San Bernardino, and they ended up in Grand Terrace. So there was a shooting in San Bernardino, they wandered around for a couple hours, the flock camera caught them coming into the city, they were here for a bit, and on their way out is when the deputies were able to get that hit, and we, we caught an attempted murder suspect leaving Grand Terrace. So they're, they're committing murders, they're committing all that stuff, but they're coming into our city. So I know initially, a lot of people think like, oh, you know, Big Brother's kinda watching us, and oh, but, but they are a great resource, because when bad things happen, and that license plate number goes into the system, as soon as they enter this city, and it hits in our camera system, we know exactly where they are, and we can track them down and get them out. Great resource.
And I liked your idea, we could probably hopefully set up a meeting with these apartment complexes, the manager and the owners. Councilman Allen, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, real quick, I was waiting on the, end of the meeting with the interview with the Fire Chief, or the report from the Fire Chief, I wanted, had a couple of questions I wanted to ask you. So yesterday, Insurance Commissioner Laura announced some new laws that came into effect, and here in California. And I would like to ask you about a couple of them. AB eight-eight-eight offers grants to help homeowners afford fire-safe roofs and Zone Zero mitigation within five feet of their homes, supports community-wide safety efforts, helps residents qualify for insurance discounts. And then AB one requires updates to the Safer From Wildfires discount program, ensures homeowners benefit from meaningful insurance savings when they take proactive safety steps. Another one, SB four-twenty-nine, California Wildfire Public Catastrophe Model Act, helps communities, first responders, and homeowners understand and reduce wildfire risk. SB four-ninety-five, faster payouts for survivors guarantees sixty percent of contents coverage, up to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, extends the deadlines. And then there's another SB for protection for businesses and nonprofits. And then AB two-twenty-six, the Fair Plan, financial stability. My question to you is, how do the homeowners access the benefits of these programs? How do they get the discounts? How do they get, you know, what I'm saying? I don't, can you speak to that, either one of you, fire, fire, wildland prevention experts? How do they go about accessing what those SBs and ABs refer to?
Yes, so Jared Doughton, resident two-two-nine-five-one, Renn Street.
Appreciate you being here, Jared, also, again.
Yeah, absolutely. In terms, not speaking specifically to those state bills and assembly bills, but in regards to funding sources that are available out there, local fire-safe councils are gonna get you on track with a lot of those home hardening funding sources, whether it's replacing roofs, siding, ultimately funding projects in and around your home that otherwise are cost prohibitive. And, and that's just generalized stuff. But if we're looking at Firewise USA, a lot of those principles and concepts that are developed that are very fundamental, will gear you towards the insurance programs and incentives that are available. And really, that's where the power lies, is with the insurance companies. And if you reach out to your homeowner's carrier, and, and ask them to provide you with specifics as to what it is, it's gonna kind of put you in a higher tier of probability of, of risk reduction, and ultimately affecting your home premiums for your insurance policies. But that's not really answering your question, Councilmember Allen. But I, I do know that there is a big push, because of the requirements that are coming down from the state to ultimately affect that zero-to-five-foot zone, is gonna be very, very expensive to folks. And I think it would behoove local residents to look for all sources out there. But my recommendation would look at Firewise USA, and then contacting their insurance companies for an inspector or something that's compliant with the Assembly Bill's, AB thirty-eight inspections upon the transfer of homeowner title is one. But that's just generally speaking towards that.
So I've not heard of the Safer From Wildfires discount program. Is that part of, is that from the, is that at the state level, and is that part of the, the?
Sorry, sorry, I interrupted Councilmember Allen. I just wanna make sure we're not delving too much into a discussion that would be a Brown Act issue. So I just wanted to maybe say, if we wanna have a further substantive discussion, maybe we put it on a future agenda.
Oh, well, I'm just discussing an email the Insurance Commissioner from the state sent out.
Understand, but I, because the subject matter isn't on the agenda, I just wanted to make sure we're in compliance with the Brown Act.
All right. Thanks.
Give that to him.
All right, thanks for being here.
Yeah, of course, thank you.
Jeff, that's for you now. That's what we paid the city attorney, that was a test to make sure he's doing his job.
I hope I passed.
But thank you for bringing it up, and, you know, it would be good for future discussions, so we could help the residents out with insurance issues. So we have nothing else. The city attorney, you have anything to add?
Nothing more than that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I, I just also, if, if you guys notice, we're getting flowers, they're donated from one of our business, Tender Petal, and they, they do a lot, if you need arrangements or anything. I'm not, they're, they're really good people. We always support our local businesses, but it's really nice to see a fresh cut of flowers in here and stuff. So we really appreciate them, you know, donating that to the city. And again, thank you, Gabriel and Judith, for your professional input on, you know, coming up to the council agenda. So the more and more you talk, the better you'll be, then, but you guys are doing a great job. Okay, so just keep up the good work, and one day you'll be sitting over here, and I don't know where Conrad will be, but, you know, you never know. But, you know, just thank you, and just keep up the good work, and it gets easier when you come up and speak. But, you know, if you get nervous, just stare at me and wonder what I'm doing up here, that'll probably help you. So, anyway, the, again, we're closing tonight's meeting in honor of Mike the Car Guy. And, you know, if you wanna see some of his videos, they're on Facebook, and, you know, he's a really great person, and we're gonna miss him. Once again, Mary Beth, you know, our prayers are for you and your son and your family. Once again, we, Mary Beth, you know, our prayers are for you and your son and your family. And, um, if you wanna put anything out on, um, social media, I'm sure you give a Johann on that. If, uh, but, the city's lost a, a good resident, but I know you guys lost a lot more, and we, um, our prayers are with you. And, you know, we love you guys, and, you know, thank you for sharing Mike with, uh, the town here. He will be missed. So, the next regular, uh, City Council meeting will be held October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five at six P M. Any requests I had in place on future, Gen I must be made in writing, submitted to the city clerk. Thank you, everybody, and good night, God bless.